To call this meeting of the policy subcommittee to order. We are going to start with policy K C D, which is Public Gifts to the Schools. And this was submitted by the M A S C. And basically it looks like, I think we already do this, Jeff, don't we?
We do this.
Yeah.
I don't know anybody who doesn't get the school committee's gift.
Yeah.
In any district out there, so I don't, well, somebody did, apparently.
Yeah, clearly, yes, somebody did it.
Somebody accepted something.
Yeah, they didn't know, okay.
I'm sure that's why, but yeah, this is what we do.
Yeah, because I don't see anything on here that I was like, that's the first thing I thought was, we do this.
I mean, with the exception of title, like the entitlement, like Title I and II A, which we get every year.
So, so now it's saying that all grants and gifts to the district, so would that be, but that might be different, though. The grants ones that we.
If we get any grants besides the entitlement grants, so if they do any, if we do any kind of competitive grant.
Then.
We, well, we tell you about it, but I don't know if you vote on it, but we always, I believe we do get a vote on those. The entitlement grants, we get every year.
Right, so there's no voting on that, yeah.
So Title I.
Because you're entitled to it, right?
Right, so those are things we get every single year.
Okay.
So, yeah, we do tell you what the expenditures are, because they show up in the budget line. They show up in the budget when we, when like Bob used to give that sheet, had all of the grants where they were expended.
Right.
All of the entitlement ones, and then the other ones you know about because you voted on somewhere. And gifts, without question.
Well, yeah, we always do that, yeah.
You always do that, so.
So going forward with the grants, will we have to now vote on those, I guess? If they're not the entitlement ones?
You know, it doesn't, yeah, I suppose, I mean, the entitlement ones you won't have. I'm sure you could if you wanted, but those are the ones we get every year.
Should I ask, should I reach out to the M A S C and ask if for every single grant we have to, besides entitlement?
I would, you could, it says all grants.
Yeah.
Ask if it's just, it's the entitlement ones.
Okay.
Because those are the only ones really that we don't, we don't talk to you about. We do, but not beforehand.
Right, well, because they're budgeted to do. Okay. Do you have any questions or anything to add, Mike?
No, only that this says, the school committee can decide regardless of the donor's intent. What to spend it on, so like if somebody donates money for some program, music, sports, art, whatever it is. It says here the committee can choose.
Oh, it's the red.
Third paragraph there. It's kind of, that blocks more than talking.
I know, I was trying to be out of the school committee, kept separate from the general.
That's the.
expended at the discretion of the committee, as provided by law.
It says, they added regardless of donor intent. Intended by the donor for specific.
Regardless of donor.
Unless they're crossing that up. Original one.
Yeah, that box makes it really.
The current one says the same thing, just says it a little differently. Any gift, whether or not intended by the donor for a specific purpose, will be accepted by the school committee. The end of it is a separate account, expended at the discretion of the committee.
So all of that's done right now, except the, expended at the discretion of the committee. I don't think any committee doesn't, I don't, I have never seen where committee, like I'm a donor and I say I wanted to go to this. And the committee's like, no, we want it to be.
Exactly, yeah.
Because you'll only get it one year, probably.
According to the policy, it can be done that way, but it's not really good practice.
I don't think we've done that.
I've not.
I've never seen.
Yeah, I've never seen that policy done here.
That's, that's the only thing I have, is whether or not we keep that in, I think it's probably safe to keep it in there. But just be aware of it.
Yeah, well, in case there's any. Yeah. But I pretty much, we respect whatever the donor, as long as it's reasonable.
Yeah. Alright, so.
So let's see, next we have policy K H A. This one is, oh, the public solicitations in the schools. Yeah, this is for review. So it was brought to our attention that they, was it, was it jumpstart for heart or?
Yeah, there was a fundraiser, this came up last year, too.
Yeah.
Former chair decided not to do anything about it, but it's come up again from some parents. There's a fundraiser done in the schools, I think, first grade, and.
Is it the whole school? It used to be the whole school.
I don't know if this is the whole school or not.
Yeah.
But it was an outside organization that the kids were raising funds for them.
Yes, I think it's the National Heart Association, yeah.
Yeah, and what they get, like some prizes or something.
Yeah.
It wasn't clear whether or not it should have gone through this process or not. So, I think they asked us to take a look at this and see whether or not it's appropriate.
To me, so I remember asking Attorney DePere about, someone had something up in a classroom and I just, it came to her attention. I just said, are you allowed to put this up or not? Is there a policy on this? And he said, if you allow one thing, it opens the door for everything else. So you have to, it's a really slippery slope, because when considering anything, always consider, if you allow this, then it sets precedent for other things. And, you know, while I think a lot of people like the American Heart Association, it's a nice organization, I'm sure other people have different opinions. I think the idea is, if we're allowing them to do it, it's a defiance of this particular policy. And it also opens the door to why aren't we doing it for, say, the American Cancer Society or something else.
Well, it also may be, and I don't, I'm not sure of the exact incident you're talking about, but it should maybe that they, they didn't approach us. It could be they didn't approach the school and that they would have.
No, they, yeah, they had it, no, no, and it was incomplete. Oh, you mean.
It was done through the school.
You're talking about the, you're talking about the fundraiser or the other issue that I was talking about?
The, the other issue.
The other, oh, yeah, it was just a question, it was just a question and it turned out that, yeah, they had it, no one had, no one was aware of it. And it wasn't, it wasn't an issue, nobody had an issue with it. It was more of like a, going forward, how would you approach this kind of thing?
See, I, I think, so the general rule that we've always used is if nonprofits approach us, they want to do a fundraiser, then we do it. It's the direct solicitation of profit, groups to come in and they want to talk to kids directly. Because that's things they want to do, they want to talk to kids, they want to sell, they want to give them something, but then they want to sell something.
Oh, I see what you mean.
So they might want to come in, like I've had them when I was a building administrator, want to come in and they want to talk to all the senior clients. Right?
Realize.
Why? You know, if it's, if it's like the Heart Association or something like that, then, then, you know, you got to figure out the intent and stuff. So if they're trying to sell something, then, then you don't do it, because that's a direct solicitation. And I think that's been forever, I don't think, as far as I know.
Yeah, that's number one here. Number two is, no general or class distribution of commercial or fundraising literature may take place without school committee permission.
Yeah, we'd never do that, anyway, we would not.
I think this, I think the point that this person was making was that this did go against that. So I'm not sure, so I guess there was.
What, what was the, what was it?
I don't know.
What was the issue with, what, what, what commercial group?
The Kids' Heart Challenge, we've run at E B S, so whatever that is. So maybe, maybe the principals can just get a reminder that this policy exists.
Yeah.
So what should we say going forward prior to having something like this, that would need to come to the committee for approval?
That's what the policy says.
That's what I thought, okay.
For, for commercial, for commercial.
Commercial or fundraiser. That's what it says.
Yep.
This also reaches P T A and P T O groups, this particular policy, in, in these cases, it says. So the last paragraph there, for purposes of this policy, local P T A and P T O groups, and groups representing school system, which they would consider school groups. And would be governed by the community's policy, the staff's expectations. They wouldn't be considered outside of commercial, or fundraising, or fundraising, be considered. So I think that's.
So what else on that?
So you, you, so you're asking me to send this to the principals for, just for you, just to.
Yeah, maybe, maybe just make them aware that, you know, before you do anything with these students.
Even if it's something that, you know, people would be accepting, you know, like the American Heart Association or whatever, it still needs to go. Just to follow the protocol, or the policy. Now, while he's taking those notes, it says, discuss proposed school committee goals, Mike. And that actually goes with the review of school committee handbook, because I went in there, I made sure this morning that everybody's titles, addresses, everything was correct. And then I went through and looked at the subcommittees to date, they're, they're updated with the right people. And the only part that needs to be updated is the last part, which is the school committee goals, which I don't think we wrote out.
We have not done.
No, and so what I want to do is an action one for next times that we have something to work with.
Okay.
I know communication was one of them. And then, was it budget was the other one?
Budget, yeah.
Yeah. Should we ask the budget committee of what they're working on and what their goals are for this year? Should we ask them to contribute to that?
Yeah, so since we changed up sort of the way we organize them, maybe we change up the idea of school committee goals, because to be quite honest, I don't know that we ever actually paid attention to them after we talked about them.
Good point.
So maybe we just give each committee, or each subcommittee, sorry, either give them a particular goal or ask them for, like, the budget one, I know that they're doing a lot of work there.
Yeah.
That's, they've done more work probably already than we've done in the last two years, probably.
Oh, I agree.
So, and then we've got, so we've got that, we've got this committee, right? We set a goal for ourselves, we've got the Success in Technology Committee, which needs a goal. I think we'll also get some ideas on that as well.
I think wanting an overall goal, because you've got a lot of new methods, like we already know.
Yeah.
And then, is just a, how do you put it, just a, maybe a review of, a review of job responsibilities.
Yeah.
Something like that.
That's actually a really.
And that could be done, that could be done through, like the conference has those, like the conference I went to, you guys weren't there, but they have those. But they're run by the M A S C, so you could have Dorothy or somebody else run maybe a series of two or three, because you got, I mean, you guys sort of trial by fire, but, you know. You got Bob, who's got half a foot in, half a foot out, you know, because he works a lot, so, you know.
And he's fairly new, he's only been here since spring, yeah.
Megan to a large degree, I think, is, is new, Julie, you know, just, and then to learn some of the things that are, they're not rules, but maybe. Maybe you learn from experience, but, you know, M A S C member concerns, and there's a time where, there's, you know, you're a public body, but not everything's public. Not everything's for public consumption all of the time, there's some guidelines and that stuff. You know, so it takes some time to learn that.
Right.
But maybe someone giving them that guidelines will help with that. You know, like, so those kinds of just general things, I think, would be good for, because you, everybody's new, I mean, you, you two are the best.
Yeah.
Think about that.
Yeah, yeah.
You know? And Jess, you know, she's.
Oh, yeah, no, she's, yeah, she'll definitely enjoy it, it's so hard when you're new, to learn everything and to know where you're supposed to be. Now, Mike, do you think that maybe looking into January or something, we could have some sort of governance meeting? Whether we include the M A S C or whether you lead it or somebody else leads it, where we kind of come up with these, like define what the roles are? Or what, how do you envision this, do you, how do you think, or should we just do this in policy subcommittee meetings? What do you want to think on that, too? I mean, it's a lot to kind of digest all at once.
There's, there's so much coming up.
Yeah, I know, with budget, too, budget season.
You could always call the M A S C and say, listen, this is one of our goals, we don't know if we're ready to have anything actionable, but like, what's your advice? Is this something we should bring in on? And if we did bring it in, like what are the modules we're looking at here?
I would rather, I would do something like that, but rather, instead of having an actual meeting, we're going to have people thinking behind, and give them something, some sort of literature document, online.
They might have online modules, that's what I'm saying, they might have some online.
That's a great idea.
I'd rather do something like that than take another many people.
I agree.
And if there are, if those are available, they'll know, they'll know just where to send it. And you can say that to them, listen, we don't want to take more time out of other committee members' lives. Maybe, is there something online they can do, in a format like that?
Now, another idea, if there isn't anything like that, I mean, could we still do a Zoom governance option if it was just an hour long or something?
It could.
Because then we wouldn't have to leave our houses, leave our family, you know, you could sit there and do it, so just as a backup idea.
Yeah.
But I would love it if we had a module that we could do at our own time, you know, kind of pull our ideas together and then.
I, I think so, and this, this subcommittee now goes. The election process, right? I think that's what we added to this vote.
And release, so, yeah.
So, the thing with, I think, where we kind of hurt, hurt ourselves, shot ourselves before, however you want to call it, is we had a meeting the very next week.
Yes.
So less than a week after the actual elections, so new members, there wasn't a lot of time to talk to them, approach them, get them, really, what they need to do. This required chartering of course.
Yep.
You know, they weren't even offering it in the time span. So, yeah, we need something, it's just, it's been, I think it's been so fast since that happened, there's been so much going on. So that's something we can look at for when scheduling next time.
Yeah, I agree, well, and that's another thing that you bring up, I think we all discussed, kind of like, wow, I never thought about the fact that it's the Tuesday right after, the following Tuesday was another meeting. And to be able to get everybody sworn in by that meeting.
Yeah, the swearing ins, you know, the office is only open like three hours a week or something, and they wouldn't even do it that week. Because technically, the election wasn't complete or certified until all the mailing stuff was done, which was the following Saturday at noon. So that left a two-hour window before the meeting to get certified.
Which we were lucky to have everybody, so, Jeff, if we were to ever move forward with trying to change that with saying that the meeting would have to be two weeks later, or we'd only cert, it would only be a month. Would, that's the regionalization agreement, correct? Is the, are the elections in the regionalization agreement or is that a separate?
We wouldn't be able to change the election timing of it, it would have to be the scheduling of committee meetings.
That's what I meant, so that would be a policy on our part, then?
Yeah.
Yeah, the time of that was probably regional agreement, so you can't do anything like that.
So instead, you know, we just have to be aware of the dates when they're coming up.
Yeah.
Instead of doing one week, you know, two weeks. Even not have a meeting that month, we can have, you know, Thanksgiving throws things off at that time, too, you know?
Yeah, I know, it's a time crunch. Alright, I have that in.
Alright, so that's good for goals.
Yeah. Alright, and then we have the timeline, discuss dissemination timeline of agenda items. So, I think one of the things that we've been frustrated with is just the timing, and, and, you know, some of us are to blame, too, of getting everything into the drive with enough time to read it. We really do need the weekend, especially for really thick things, to get through and to absorb. I know sometimes I find myself on Tuesdays trying to read things that have just been put in there. So we were talking about coming up with kind of like a timeline, where if it isn't in by a certain time, it has to be taken off the agenda or something along those lines. And then how we're going to disseminate it, whether it's going to be like this, where you would get the information by clicking on the agenda and getting the information, if it would be a PDF form, which we have samples of here. I don't know if anybody has any of your foundations?
Do you want to ask Christie? Sure. Christie?
Yeah.
You have a couple minutes?
Yeah.
Christie, we were discussing the timeline for putting documents into the drive for the school committee. So they had, they were talking about having something that's, you know, seventy-two business hours, which the Tuesday meeting documents would be in at the beginning of the workday on Thursday. So what were the other questions you had?
Yeah, so one of them was, we want, we were thinking about possibly giving people a deadline, because you can't put it in the drive unless you have it.
Right.
So giving people a deadline of, it has to be in your possession seventy-two hours ahead of time, or however long, so that you can get into the drive so that we can read it. The other idea, and if it's not in there, then it has to be taken off the agenda, just to kind of get people to do things. And then the other idea was, if we should keep the agenda like this with the information, or if we should make it into a big PDF at the end, so that if someone requests it, like online, like choose between different things, you can just go and click it. So they're not always harassing you with emails, can I have the information?
Honestly, that doesn't.
It doesn't affect you?
Doesn't happen.
Okay.
No, I've never, I never really get help with requests for documents. Right now, I always requested that the leadership team submit things to me by Friday afternoon. That's just past practice for past chairs' request, that's always happened. But as soon as I get the material, it goes in the drive, so, I mean, I could do it in a matter of minutes.
Yeah.
It's just getting.
I think it's more pushback on whoever it is that's supposed to be responsible, whether it's a principal, or a budget, whatever it is, whoever it is, it's just more. Because if you're not getting it until Friday, we're not getting it to Friday, another part of this is maybe notification every time something goes in the drive, which is supposed to happen through Google automatically, but it doesn't always.
Oh, yeah, I don't get enough to do.
Yeah, like if, if you're.
It must be a setting.
If there's a folder shared with you, there's supposed to be, anytime something's added to that folder, you're supposed to get a notification.
Yeah.
Automatically.
Yeah.
But if that doesn't happen, so maybe fall for a look at that, I don't know.
I can ask him.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
It's a setting, it sounds like a setting.
Yeah.
I think it is, but I don't know if individuals have to do it, or if it has to be done by whoever sets up the folder, I don't know how that works. But even on Friday, like Friday is not a time, because Friday, you know, you're not doing it during the day, weekend comes, you probably, you know, we're not asking principals or anybody to do anything over the weekend. So we're not asking to do this or that, leaves Monday and Tuesday afternoon, which for some of this stuff is not enough time, especially for larger meetings, we want to.
Oh, great. Now, the deadline for the newsletter that usually sent out is like, is ten AM on, on Friday, correct?
Yeah.
So would like a noon on Friday be a good time for people to have to get it if we were to give people, or should we stick with the ten so people are aware of the same deadline, do you think?
No, I don't think, I think Friday's too late.
You think Friday's too late?
If, if, if we're going to change the deadline for documentation, I would ask you to consider maybe an earlier agenda setting meeting.
Sure.
Because that way, they know exactly what they have to prepare.
Yeah.
You know, if we do them the week before, that, you know, kind of limits the time, because I have to post the agenda.
Yep.
On Thursdays or Friday mornings, and so that kind of limits it to, to kind of, so at least they know where they need to focus and they can answer earlier.
In the past, how, how much in advance have agendas been set?
Um, I think going back to Cliff's chairmanship, can you say that? He did, we did, that Tuesday morning, the week before, is that right?
Yeah.
And then, that was, they would set the agenda, so they would discuss the agenda, they'd come in, tell me, I always did the draft agenda, right after the previous meeting.
So I really only need people Wednesday and Thursday to put together whatever they need to do.
Yes, right.
I can see how that.
So I wonder, it would be like.
But it's a working document, so even though you're meeting on Tuesday.
Right.
She has a draft, she has a draft agenda when you sit down.
Yeah.
Which has most of the stuff, so like, if it's three weeks in advance and I, there's something I want in there, I say, Christie, just put this on the drive. And then when I meet with the chair, we discuss it, and it, and the chair says, let's put that to the next meeting, we do. But most of the stuff is already on there when you get there, so.
Which is, which is another reason why it's confusing, when it can't be in the drive by Thursday or Friday, you know?
Well, then, we, yeah, but, I mean, we've had a lot of chairs since then, and so.
True.
You know, so.
Musical chairs.
Typically, yeah, musical.
That's really good.
That's a good one. So, it's, it gets worked on, it gets worked on, and then.
The agenda you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, so by the time you sit down, you're not talking about a draft and a agenda.
Yeah, you're not coming up something.
It's one or two things, it's just something that maybe came up that day, or something like that, or a couple days.
I typically start the draft agenda the day after the meeting, so we have.
You have a meeting.
The November meeting we had, I started the draft agenda the next day, so I carried over all the first reads. We have that master schedule that Cliff started years ago.
Yeah.
And I kind of go through that to see what.
So what topics have come up?
Those annual topics that come up every year, or anything that I've heard.
When does that get sent out to the people who need to provide reports or documents?
Lately, they don't get it until the agenda's set, they don't even know.
Yeah, so that's.
If they're reporting.
Right, so that's the thing, right.
So if we had it, like a schedule, like say, this, this meeting is principals, next meeting, you know, they, they could plan it, they could, they could plan better.
That's the other thing, I think we had, and you know, the pandemic has changed some of this, because we had a pretty strict schedule, who attended what meetings.
Yeah.
And that makes it easier, because, okay, the principal knows they're going to be there, if they have anything, they know it's going to be in. So that, so we've had two years of that being kind of thrown off, so I would suggest we get back to that, you can revise that schedule, the Cliff did, way back and say, okay, let's, let's see if we can stick to this. So that makes it easier, because then they know they're going to be there. You know, and it's easier to say, it's easier if they think they're going to be there to say, okay, you don't have to come. At least they're, yeah, because then they prepare for it, you know?
So why don't we, why don't we do this, then? Do you want to see if this timeline would work with everybody, will agree to start setting the agendas earlier, maybe a day or two earlier? Maybe even the Friday before that Tuesday that you're talking about, so that's a week and a few days. And then people can know when they leave Friday, okay, I better get this Friday next week, and then the whole week to, you know.
So are you suggesting that you would have your agenda meeting with Jeff that Friday?
Yeah.
So Friday before.
Like the Friday morning, the Friday.
Yeah, like almost a week in plus.
So you Friday morning, set the agenda.
Yeah.
Then the following week, the entire week goes by, and then a week after that.
Yeah, and then when would everything be due to be in the drive? Do you want it Thursday, Friday? Thursday, so Thursday at five?
And Friday's, Friday's too late.
Yeah, I agree.
We know Friday's too late, it doesn't work, so.
Should we do like Thursday at like noon or something, I'm just thinking.
Well, Thursday at noon is when it should all be in the drive, so she's going to need it before Thursday.
That's what I was thinking. That way she's not, yeah, so Christie doesn't have to. Because I don't want to give you time to get it in there.
If we say Thursday at five and I leave at four.
Right.
Right. And then your Friday's slammed, yes, I agree.
So I'm saying the start of the day Thursday, so if anybody wants to fix anything on Wednesday night, whatever they can, and then either email it off Wednesday night or Thursday morning, they can whenever.
Yeah, but we'll, we will have Thursday to tweak any agenda, because I will post it.
Yeah, because then that gets everything.
That's great, that's a timeline, yeah.
Yeah, everything is known before you have to post it, so if anything has to come off, then we don't have to worry about revising or anything.
Now, you also might want to put, because you know it's going to happen, and then number one, some exceptions, are there exceptions for, what kind of emergencies are there an exception for? Something comes up.
Oh, right.
Yeah, I don't think we're, I don't think we're like hard coding, can't add anything.
Okay.
This is just for, for those known topics, like you said, you know?
Or their monthly report, you know, that they're.
Yeah, okay.
Like, we're not saying like, okay, if you don't have anything by two weeks before it, absolutely can't run the agenda, it's just, we know there's ninety percent of stuff is going to happen. And then you require the report or whatever, and then there's that, there's always something.
Probably more than that.
Yeah.
Also, then the, the last sticky situation would be, let's say Christie by noon or whatever, or Thursday at ten, doesn't have something from somebody. Whose job is it to chase it down and make sure it's in there?
So why don't we do this? With email, you can set up automated emails to go out, automated reminders, just set up a monthly recurring reminder, definitely for like nine thirty, ten AM, whatever time would be good.
With like a reminder.
Just to everybody, to every, everybody that could possibly be responsible, so you don't ever have to change it. And it just says something like, if you have an agenda item, if you're supposed to be providing documentation or something.
If you have a report, too.
Yeah, if you have to, please send it now.
Yeah, and then if it's not in by a certain time, does it come off the agenda?
Yes. I think, I think it has to, otherwise we're back into the situation.
No, I agree.
No, I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, I'm fine.
And you can do, you know, you can set up, you can set it up once in Gmail and just set it to recur.
Do you feel like noon on Thursday would be a good time as a cutoff for you?
I think so, because then I have the afternoon to make sure.
Perfect.
You got my ducks, that'll work, yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you, Christie.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
That's a great idea with the recurring, if you want to.
Yeah.
And this way it's not having one person have to just go in, if, if that email goes out as a reminder, it will jumpstart people to get it in.
Because we know the meetings are the second Tuesday of every month, right?
Yeah.
So that means.
Most of the time.
It's the first Thursday of every.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Is that how it works?
Yeah.
Or, I guess some cases it could be like, I think it's, but like, most of the time it's going to be.
Do you have any issue with meeting Thursdays and stuff Fridays?
No. No.
And then, then the question becomes, so that then it goes down to the dissemination. Right now, on the agenda, we have the, the links with policies and everything else that's on there that's in. So as long as the agenda is posted on the website for now, people still have access to all of these things, because when I do, like, let's say policy KCD on this. Anyone in the public can click on that and get that policy right away.
So the only thing, the only thing with that is, what are you linking to? Are you linking to an existing document that's already out there? Or are you linking to something that has not been discussed yet in a meeting? Cause that's two different things, one has an issue.
So none of these have been discussed in a meeting? I put them on here.
Well, KC, KHA has, cause that was the, that link was to our actual policy.
Right, but then again, if you go down to your number four, Mr. Toppman's timeline recommendations, or Wakefield Public Schools, those haven't been discussed yet.
So here, here's the question, right, when does it become, so if we put a document out there that we're going to discuss at an upcoming public meeting? And it's out there in the public and people have the ability to comment on it, does that in any way influence what comes up in the public meeting? And is that okay or not okay?
I would think it would be okay, only because as long as we're not deliberating on it, they can then give us their comments, which we can then bring to the floor.
I, I would think that like one of the hard cutoffs you could have is that if you're voting on it, then it should be something they can get access to. You can have a discussion without them.
Because it's voting on, most likely it's already been discussed at some point.
Right, it's a first read.
If you're gonna vote on it, then they should have access to it, because your vote is like, so once you vote, it's, there it is, it's done, so.
You shouldn't have to vote to know what's in, right?
That, yeah, so, but if it's just a discussion, if you're just doing a discussion, that's what they think the public has to have. I think it's good enough that they know that you discussed it, if, if it's not gonna be actionable on part of the school committee, what, like, what would you give them that's?
That, that's my question, right?
What could you give them?
You're giving them a document that we haven't even decided that we want.
Yeah, I mean, cause sometimes you're just gonna have a discussion, just to have a discussion, to see if anything has to be done.
Yeah.
So, I mean, at the point where it becomes actionable, then they should have a link, so they can see what, how do you vote on it, right?
So are you saying that going forward in the agendas, if it's a voting one? Because, so here's the deal, so if we do a first read.
Or, or a first read.
Or a first read, yes, because that's when they might want to, yeah.
Anything that you're gonna take action on, they should see.
So, a first read and a policy, so anything that we're gonna take action on, we should put a link in.
So if we're voting that night, they should be able to read it for you?
Right, because if you, if you're just having a discussion, at some point, it either drops or there's action taken. If it drops, then, then it does, and you don't have anything to link to.
Yeah, it's just goes back to that conversation we had with Christie before, when does it become public document?
No, I agree.
Or is it just a working document?
Yeah. So, so going forward in the agendas, unless it's an actionable first read vote, it, it won't get a link, but if it's one of those, it can have a link, so they can see what it is, so they can speak to it, it's an actionable. Because we would want their input on it, versus say, like, if someone's presenting a grant that we're voting on, well, that's, that's actionable too.
Yeah, that's the, they would.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, yeah, certainly that.
Yeah, that's all public information.
Yeah.
We have access to, we can just, we can just put a link to, so that's not that big.
Cause that was the whole point that.
The point is trying to save all these requests coming in, if there are, even if she says there isn't a lot, so.
Yeah, well, there was, there have been a couple requests from people that we make it available so that people can speak to it. That's why we were just, that's why we put it on the agenda to discuss.
Yeah.
Most of our requests come from our state.
Really?
Yeah, some group wants, you know, well, Sally, so they want all there, so they want all that.
Fascinating.
Yeah.
All right, so then, for, so for right now, that's where we're gonna leave all of this, correct? Is there anything else underneath number four that you feel like we need to discuss, or?
No, so we got the timeline.
Yeah.
Can we just set that, or do we need to talk to the whole meeting?
I think we can just set that, that's not, yeah.
Set it.
Especially, I, I think the, the person most affected is Christine.
Well, you can set it, Mike, as the chair of the committee.
Yeah, I just set it.
Boom, Mike sets it too.
Just set it, okay, so you have to just let them know at the beginning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can't just set it in your head.
Set it and forget it.
Get angry now.
Right, we're just sorry. Okay, so it looks like we're all done with that, and the last thing, because we, we wanted to discuss the very last thing, which is the student handbook. Is this Wakefield Public Schools' class size policy?
Yeah, we've got a couple comments about that.
So, the public policy of the school committee, this is for Wakefield, kindergarten maximum twenty-two children, grades one through two, maximum twenty-five, grade through four, twenty-five, five through eight. Uh, maximum ratio of twenty-five to one on a team, high school maximum one twenty-five to one children to teacher. They must have a lot of, a lot of.
No, that's, I think that takes into account your whole student load, so.
Oh, if you're a math teacher.
If you're anybody, if you have five sections, you know.
It's a maximum of that many students.
You know, so that's what we always look at. As a high school minister, you look at, okay, how many kids do you teach during the day, total?
That makes sense.
And so it was, it always comes up to a vault.
So it's more subject based than class?
Yeah, so it, you, you take your whole class load, so Mike Toppman teaches five sections, you know, ten kids, and you just count them up. So it usually comes up to be, be between high schools, like one-ten to one-twenty, something like that. So they set there's a, a teacher can't have more than a hundred twenty-five, so you have to think about, a hundred twenty-five kids, that's how many kids I grade. That's how many kids I'm responsible, so that's, so that's what that, that's gotta be the.
That makes sense, cause it's funny, I remember when we used to get our class list, everybody used to be like, how many kids do you have?
Yeah, 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 right, that's what that is.
How many boys do you have, how many girls do you have?
So you look at that number, it's crazy, but that's.
No, but that makes sense, cause I never thought of high school.
These are reasonable maxims, I mean, cause there's no set, the only, the only, the only conditions where they have like a set is, is like in a shop. And it goes by square foot, it's like, you have to have a certain amount of square foot, cause there's machines involved.
Oh, that makes sense.
There might actually be something for a dedicated science lab too, but other than that, you know, these are, these are reasonable maxims. I think, when you say maximum, we try to stay way under these numbers. And that's because that's what the community has asked for a number of times, that we maintain small class, so smaller class sizes, uh, and then maybe high teens. And, and really, you know, there's, a study's been done that, um, there's not a lot of difference in, in value between like a class of twelve versus sixty, something like that. Cause only at the upper end, you, you start really having, like a class with twenty-five, twenty-six kids, then you start having an issue. But, between like ten or twelve and sixteen or seventeen, there's not much value added by having a small class size. Not that you lose, but now, if that's what you wanna maintain, you could hire another teacher.
Right.
And there's not a significant difference. Matter of fact, at the lower grades, it makes it more difficult to group kids and to do centers and stuff like that.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah, that's it, yeah.
Yeah, you had two kids per, five, two kids.
Yeah. That's not fun, you know.
Yeah, so.
It's not effective.
So they, these are, I don't know, those are.
The only thing I would ask here is, so this says, these numbers, I think, we have to obviously tailor them to us, cause it's gonna be different at BES than it is at PMS. Right? Cause it's just bigger building.
No, but I would say, but there's, it's a bigger building, but it's, it's, you know, it's got more class teachers, so I think the students, student ratio should be the same.
Same classroom size.
So I know when John talked to us, uh, a few months ago now, he said eighteen was the preferred size there. Some are at twenty, twenty-three, uh, wasn't, there's one twenty under that, and I think there's one being bigger. Twenty-one, twenty-two, so you gotta make the kindergarten, right?
Yeah, right.
So, like you said, as a bigger class size, it starts to get an issue. At twenty-three, then you add a third class, then you've got what, a class of twelve now?
Yeah, but you know, you're gonna hit that point where, like, all of a sudden, you're at twenty-six, and you're like, oh, this is too big, and then you hire another teacher, you're at thirteen.
Right.
Right.
So you start all over again, but you have to do that, or else the next year, you're at thirty.
Right.
Or maybe, I, I think one of these ideas was, uh, not necessarily making a separate class, but adding a mandatory aid or kind of freshman or something to it.
Right.
You know, so you don't necessarily have to have, you have twenty-five kids, you don't all of a sudden have to have a third class of twelve each, but you gotta give the teachers some help.
Yeah, and if there's space, and our classrooms are normal eight hundred, eight, eight, nine hundred square feet, they're normal class sizes, not like we converted the closet or something like that. So they're normal class sizes, and that's what we try to do, so, I mean, we're down on, on our reads and powers, and they're difficult to get, you know, as you know. We, we budgeted for two that we're still trying to hire at, at, you know, PES. So, I think, you know, that's, that's the other solution, until size becomes a problem, you know, so.
So I like the last two things on this, the one is the superintendent or his designated may, under their own authority, have been up to two students above the policy of he or she deems appropriate. And then however the committee recognizes these parameters may not be achievable for any given year, in all cases, it may authorize waiver, so there is some flexibility. My question would be, would this be a good question, I don't know, I'm not sure how you decide this, as a survey? Like, what do you feel is the appropriate class size, or do we go by studies, or how do we, if we were to come up with something similar to this, how would we justify a number? Cause right now, we could say, oh, John thinks eighteen, or twenty-three would be a great number, they feel kind of arbitrary.
I, I don't know, I think that's where the, the personalized piece comes in, so, you know, what, you know, what passive for a big class in an urban city will be different.
Right, yes.
So I think, you know, you say it depends on what, what tends to work.
Right.
You know, someone like John, he's been in the building, so he'll know what works and what doesn't. Sally's been in the building, she'll know like what works, it's, cause some classes, you can have a lot of kids, it's not gonna, you know, like a survey class, but. If it's a class where you're gonna do some more specific detailed stuff, maybe you want smaller class sizes, so I think that's. I'd really like to start with the principals and the, mainly the principals and the teachers, and see what they're.
So we should ask?
Doable.
So we should ask them, take a look at this, see what they think might be appropriate for us?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we could.
And then when it comes to, you know, the difference between making a new classroom or just getting additional help in there. I know, you said you're having trouble hiring people now. There's also, you know, Adam wanted to bring up increasing pay for students, is that a possibility?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think they, it is.
Or is the, is the pay the whole? Pay the barrier, or is it?
No, we did a, we did a, um, we did a comparison study, uh, the powers approached us a couple of years ago, yeah, so still, we're comparable.
You're comparable a couple of years ago, or now?
No, we're comparable now. But, if you, if you're saying like, well, maybe we should pay them a little more, I don't think it's gonna hurt.
No, it would never hurt, no, that's not.
I don't think.
Is it the magic bullet that gets us higher?
I don't think so, I mean, if we were significantly below, I would say maybe, but, you know, there's a lot of other advantages to come in here and maybe go to another district, right? So, it's not that we're significantly below, I don't think, like I said, I don't think it ever hurts, um, you know, it doesn't, but I, I don't think if you increased it by five bucks an hour, that's what it's gonna say. Now I'll go.
I think it's five dollars an hour more. Depends on what we're, it depends on what we're at for a pay though.
What's it right now, what's the rate?
Twenty, Christine, we just, we just checked the lesson, the, the power rate, cause we have a grid.
I mean, twenty, anything, you know, ten bucks is a decent.
Cause we were just looking at. Yeah, I know, we were just looking at this yesterday.
Timing.
Yeah. So, they start at, step one, they start at twenty-one bucks an hour, and then you go up to step ten, which is twenty-five, twenty-one.
That's step ten, that's ten years in?
That's step ten.
You said twenty-one is the start?
Twenty-one's the start.
So.
To twenty-five.
Run up to twenty-six to thirty? Instead of twenty-one to twenty-five, twenty-six to thirty, did that, did that change anything?
Uh, might, might, like I said, I don't think it's gonna hurt.
What's that?
Well, you know what, it might help, it might help keep, keeping the ones you have.
That's what I was thinking.
You know, might, it might.
I mean, that's just important sometimes.
Well, knowing that someone who's just starting is making four twenty-five less than me after ten years, is a huge jump, don't you think? I mean, like, I, I mean, it's small, like, there's really.
Maybe we, maybe we increase the upturn levels, and then do some sort of, uh, retention bonus or something with the low levels.
That might be worth a mention.
I think it's worth looking at, I mean, it has come up a couple times, we've done the regular studies of it, but, you know, I'm.
So who would be the action person to discuss that? Would that be the budget committee? Would that be?
Why don't, so why don't we start with, why don't we start with the principals like you suggested?
Okay.
Right, see if, uh.
And who would do that? Is, is Jeff gonna reach out to them, or?
I would think, yeah.
Yeah, and you can ask them about class size and.
So.
I'm gonna put it my in my minutes too.
Yeah, I mean, just cause we're comparable, doesn't mean we're good.
Right, right, right.
That's my favorite, I mean, my favorite saying, Jeff, just cause that's the way we've always done it, doesn't mean it's the good way to do it.
Well, I know it's come up, and it's come up this year with, um, a couple of the powers, um, and you know, when, when, everything's running smoothly, I mean, it's not an issue, but. All of a sudden, there's like workload increases in the powers, and I'm doing all this for, how I can go to Walmart and be a greeter for, you know, so.
Yeah, no, and I, and I think, you know, a lot of those teachers depend on those paras, I mean, they're, they're essential, and, you know, and I, I, I know a lot of the paras, they're, they're very hardworking. People who are, I just, I'm shocked that there, there are, there are teachers that are paras right now that we're so lucky to have, I would wanna keep those people.
So, I'm gonna, just, just, just so I wanna make sure, I'm gonna kind of send this to the principal, and we'll send the power pay schedule along, but.
Yeah.
Great, yeah.
Basically, uh.
Are these numbers appropriate for us? Should we adjust them?
Or maybe, you know, do we, do we think our retention will be better, and then the school committee can decide if they want to make a, uh, an increase. And what we can do is, once we, once the principal said, you know, make, you know, four dollars an hour would be better, they might know a place that like, okay, they pay this. We do just a, just Bob and I did, just a general survey, um, and then if that's the case, we can figure out based on the amount of powers we have now, what that increase would cost the district. So we can, we can take a, a quick look at that. So let me just stop my son in this.
I think that's great, all right.
What, uh, can I just ask for my own information? What's the deciding factor to put an aid or a power special in?
Well, if it's, uh, it's two things, if there's, if there is a special education one, it's usually required by that. If not, it's just, it's a load of the classroom, like if a teacher has just challenging kids that, and you can have challenges.
So not necessarily number of kids?
It could be, yeah, I mean.
That can be a factor, the both, so.
See, that's the other thing, like, sometimes you don't know, like, you could get, Aces had this happen. You know, you think what your class size is, you get seven kids moving in, that changes, you're already thinking, okay, maybe, uh, this is, so you're already thinking it's gonna be, you know, Mr. Toppin's gonna have a big class. And now you get six more kids, right, and, and, and you get four, and the other teacher gets two, like, okay, that's, that's gonna be too much. Maybe you're a new teacher, so, you know, then the principal says, no, I should get a power for that, for that class, I was thinking about doing it anyway. Well, let me move one over to Mr. Toppin's class, cause he's new, and he needs the extra help. So, a lot of it is just, if you know the class is gonna be really big, then it's a no brainer, but a lot of times, it's just the principal. You know, you gotta rely on the principal making a.
Experience feel.
Yeah, like a good call on the run, like, you know, and, and not getting into the year, like, okay, you knew this was gonna happen, why didn't you ask for a power? I see, that, that's what you don't want.
So.
It happens, cause sometimes you just, and then.
So typically, like, what percentage of classrooms have one in a given year? Majority, a handful, not enough, not as much, what, what is it?
My opinion, not enough, I think always having a, an extra adult in that room, and when, when we, when we break, yeah, I'll give you a good example of that. But always having somebody, another person in there would help.
So what I'm kind of driving at is.
And they're short money, I mean, you, you saw the price on it, I mean.
What I'm kind of driving at is, would we just make it mandatory to have one in every room, and then based on this policy, if we did, another one?
In every room, in every single classroom?
In elementary schools?
What kind of, what kind of hit would that be?
I don't know, it's a question.
That's like, if the majority of them had them, it probably wouldn't be much, but if you only have three classrooms with them, then yes, it'd be a bigger hit, but you don't know that right now.
Yeah, no, and, and. No, and and we always, again, as you know, we try to present something that would lean and that, so, but to have an extra, to have an extra power in there, um, yeah.
Like, just across the board, every room gets one, regardless, and then if you were required to have one for special ed, then that's, that's another one, okay? And if you have an exceptionally tough room, that's another, you know.
What's really nice about that is I'm thinking about how far we've fallen because of all the COVID protocols.
Exactly.
You could have that pair of working one on one with the students that need the extra help or that have identified.
We have the math coaches, we have literacy coaches, they're one person going around to all the rooms trying to.
Yeah, I mean, it's, well, and they're not sitting with necessarily those specific kids, they're moving around, seeing where the needs are, which would be great.
I mean, if if we can afford it.
Those those coaches work with the powers too.
Yeah.
They don't just work.
That's true, yeah.
You know, we we don't want, I mean, we don't want babysitting, we want someone who's doing something productive with kids, and so. Yeah, it's a, it's, so let's, let's start with this.
Yeah.
And then, you know, Kate, that's a good, we're going to argue it, you know, for sure.
Well, we'll see.
But you know, it's the personnel thing, it goes back to that, it's the the argument that I made before, that does not necessarily, when you start looking around, you start talking to other administrators. It's not that there's a shortage of teaching, it's that people realize that the only way out of this thing now is to have additional staff. Even more important than technology, that you need staff helping kids, because that, you know, that, because they, it's all of the instructional stuff, plus all of the social emotional stuff. All sitting there in front of you now, so you need some, you need bodies in there, you need adults in there who can deal with that stuff and and teach now. So, well, before you didn't have, as as you take the social emotional stuff, you know, you only need one person, but you're not dealing with a kid who's melting down.
Right.
So now we're starting to see more and more of that, and that's in this district, you know, some of the other districts even even more, so. There's a shortage because they're getting hired, we're not training less of them.
Yeah.
You know, people still are interested in education.
Well, that's why I know the plan calls for targeted additional ones, but, yeah, well, I'm suggesting is just make it across the board.
Right.
Cross the board, everybody gets it, regardless, every room, yeah, every room. And then, then you do this analysis and decide if it's exceptionally more in this particular year, give them, so now there would be three. Starting with that, yeah, let's start, let's get a handle on that and see what happens.
All right, so before I adjourn, because we did the last one, um, is there anything that needs to be on our next one that you can think about this moment in time?
Next one will be probably June, right? All right, so let's see if we can have a response on that by January.
Yeah.
And we can try to figure out a date later, probably mid-June, by the way.
Yeah. All right, I'd like to adjourn our policy meeting.